Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for August 16th, 2022. My name is Carrie Martnek. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started, I have a few notes to read here. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, an act relative to extending certain COVID-2019 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on July 16th, 2022. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The act allows the Planning Board to be entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the lives through the meeting may do so by going to Northboard Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. To confirm that everyone anticipated on the agenda are remotely present, members, and I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Bill Pierce?
Here.
Millie Milton?
Yeah.
Anthony Zaitin?
Here.
Amy Peretzky?
Here.
And staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Fred Litchfield?
Here.
Laurie Connors?
Yeah.
Great. Ground rules for the meeting. Chair will invite a speaker on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to their application. Participants will provide full name and hold until a name is called. Each speaker will be asked to use their phone or computer when not speaking and speak clearly to help generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded by the Chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the Chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the Board and Committee will be conducted by roll call vote. For public comment by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand and wait to be recognized by the Chair. Please note party or number will be visible to those viewing the meeting. By Zoom, click Raise Hand on the bottom of your screen and wait to be recognized. Chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, the Chair will call each by name and afford approximately three minutes to each. So with that, why don't we get started with tonight's agenda? First on the agenda is the continued public hearing for 100 Barefoot Road Special Permit and Special Permit with Site Plan Approval. This has been, there's been a request to continue this hearing. Laurie, is there anything specific to add to the request or?
I believe they're here this evening.
Oh.
I, I would just request that you make that motion to continue after their presentation.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought they were requesting to continue. I misunderstood. Okay. Why don't we bring in, so who should I be looking for here to come in?
Vito?
Oh, there you are, Vito. Hold on.
I have a question because I need to recuse myself. Is it just from the vote that I do?
Oh, no. So you should step away from the conversation and go back, go to an attendee. And then when we conclude and we move to continue, we'd come back on. That's right. Thanks for reminding me that, Millie.
Yep. So is that something Jim does?
Oh, yep. Jim, do you want to make Millie an attendee?
Yep, switching her over now.
Great. And for the purpose of the minutes, Millie Milton has recused herself from the 100 Barefoot Road Special Permit Hearing and has moved into the attendee portion of the webinar. Okay, great. Hi, Vito, how are you?
Good evening. Vito Colonna, Coniston Engineering. So at the end of this, we are going to ask for a continuance just for another meeting. But I wanted to just go over kind of where we are. We submitted updated plans. You know, and kind of where the project stands right now. So we did get an initial review from Laurie and we submitted updated plans to try to address most of those comments. I'll just bring up the plans now. Okay, so this is the updated set of plans. I could just run through a few of the changes that we added. On the existing conditions plan, we were just asked to locate all the existing trees within the limit of work. It's kind of all these gray dots in there. A majority of them, not all, but most of them were smaller diameter pines. Most of them in the 10 to 12 inch range. It's kind of newer growth that's kind of emerged around the edges. But it is mostly those kind of smaller diameter pines. There's a few mixed in that are a little bit bigger. But that's just the majority of them that are in there. We were also asked to better define the limit of work just through a kind of symbol on the plan. So we just find that limit. So it could be laid out in the field. So it could be staked and, you know, they wouldn't go too far clear unnecessary areas outside. That's just necessary for the construction. We added in a retaining wall along this back edge to limit some of the grading and then also soften the grading above it. Previously, it was a one-to-one riprap slope. So we went to a, since that cut slope, we've went to a two-to-one vegetated slope. And then the retaining wall below to help save some of that grading. The retaining wall does get a little tall in the corner. It's about eight feet tall or so in this corner at the highest point. So we didn't want to go much taller than that. So we did do the earth grading above it just to save on some height on that wall. And we moved the dumpster pad to the back of the building over in here with a, with a screen around it. We did add parking along this back row just because the building itself, they added a second story in this area of the building for some additional space. So we added those parking spaces along the back. We added a bike rack up front right here and a sidewalk along this edge. Some of the other information that was submitted, we did get a traffic report in. Kim Lee Horn did the traffic report. It was Bill Scully. He's done work in town before. And it was more specific. The original one we had done in our office was more generic. This was site-specific to this, to the actual use. He did traffic counts. And he found that the increase from the project would be 54 trips per day total. You know, that's split half in, half out with only five at the peak in the morning and six in the peak in the PM. And he also found that it wouldn't affect the level of service of any intersections in the area, specifically down at Solomon Pond Road at that intersection. That seemed to be where most of the traffic would head from this site. He also evaluated the site distance in both directions and found that to be acceptable for the design speed out there. The design speed he measured was a little bit faster than the posted speed limit, which is typical. The post is 30. He found the average speed at 33 with the 85th percentile at 38. So that's usually what you design for is that 85th percentile. So he did confirm that we do have sufficient site distance in both directions for that higher speed. And the only other kind of outstanding item that we didn't have yet was still the, an updated landscaping plan and an updated lighting plan. They was requested that we light this entrance as it comes in. And then there was some additional plantings that were required. So unfortunately, we don't have that yet. That's one of the reasons for continuance. And then also give the opportunity to, Fred had a letter a couple of days ago that I did discuss with Fred. So there are a few items in there that, you know, given the, you know, now till then, till the next meeting, I think we can work out. So I don't know if Fred wants to go through those letters after we take questions or we can go through it now. That's really all I had is a quick summary going through everything.
Okay, and then there's for the planners' comments. I see as of August 10th, there are several comments in reply. Is that what you've just presented here or is everything addressed here or there's additional?
Not quite. Everything is addressed. One thing is I'm still awaiting that updated landscaping plan as well as a photometric plan. So my comments are pretty, pretty minor at this point.
Okay, so Laurie's waiting for landscaping and photometrics. Okay. And then Fred, did you want to go through anything on your letter?
Well, actually, I would like to clarify a few things. There's several things in the letter are standard conditions. And there were, there were probably three points that Vito and I talked about that are probably the crux of what will take us some time to go through. One, you all have the letter. I take it.
Does everyone have the letter or do you need some, does anyone need a visual on the letter? Looks like, I can't see everybody, so just. No, okay. Looks like everyone has a letter.
Okay, so the three points were number five, number seven, and probably actually number four, five, and seven, and eight. Anyways. Number four was the stormwater report indicates that there's less flow going out towards Barefoot Road on the driveway. But I would prefer not to see that sheet flow coming out into the street. There's a drainage structure there, but the water that misses that structure is going to go on down Barefoot Road and create a problem. So what I had talked to Vito about was adding some structures there. And whether it's contained on-site or allowed to connect to that catch basin requires him to analyze that pipe in Barefoot Road to see if it can, if it has the capacity to handle any extra volume pipe to it directly. If it doesn't, they can either upgrade it or do some infiltration right at the property line in that area where the circle of the pointer is going in the circle.
Yeah.
He's going to work on that. Number five, I have to admit, I made a mistake. I've, since I wrote the letter, I've had a chance to talk to the zoning officer and there is, there's no issue there. The zoning says that when an industrial district abuts a residential district, the setback should be 100 feet. And so I was applying 100 feet from that corner of the residential district. And it goes across a corner of the building. However, if you read further on the footnote, it indicates that when the zoning line is along the roadway or in the roadway, you're allowed to move it to the other side of the road to, in order to reduce the setback by the width of the road. And that, and that is true. And so therefore, the setback would be from, right where the cursor is now, that corner of where the zoning district would be on the other side of Barefoot Road. And then the 100 foot from there is short of the building. And so there's no reason for a variance or alteration of the building. And I did confirm that with the building inspector today. So I apologize for that mistake. Number seven indicates that there's an intermittent stream in that area where Vito's showing the cursor. And what we've agreed that that is a conservation issue, but it does have some impact on the grading and the work in that area around the corner of the site. And so that intermittent stream status needs to be confirmed with the Conservation Commission before they can go further with their site work. It doesn't really affect the decision by the Planning Board. I don't believe it's going to affect the location of the building, but it may impact some of the grading that's within that 200-foot area to that stream if it is considered to be perennial and the calculations don't bear it out as Vito thinks it will. And then the last thing I had is number eight is the total disturbed area. If it's more than an acre, then they're required to get a land disturbance permit in accordance with our stormwater bylaw that was adopted last year at town meeting. And Vito has indicated that they will be above the one acre limit and they will be applying for land disturbance and stormwater permit from the Conservation Commission as they are the stormwater authority. So what they're going to do is file for that permit and submit a request for determination of applicability with their computations verifying what they believe is the, determines that stream to be intermittent and not a bear, not actually part of the perennial portion of Barefoot Brook that is labeled on the USGS sheet, which is how we, we look at them initially. First thing we do is we look, believe it or not, we look for a dark blue line. And if that's the case, then it's generally considered perennial. However, in order to override that, you run what's called a stream stats calculation and determine if the volume of water that runs towards that area is sufficient, then it's considered perennial. I didn't do that, but Vito said he did and I will work with him in the next month or so to confirm that. Either way, Conservation will make the final decision on that. The other, the other thing I noticed is that I repeated myself with condition number 10 and number 14. So there only needs to be one completed operation and maintenance inspection report submitted with the ASBIL plan, not two.
Okay.
The rest of the conditions are pretty, pretty typical stuff and should not be an issue for them to gather some more data and show it on the plan.
Any questions from the board on Fred's proposed conditions here? Bill?
No, nothing on Fred's. I have something with the traffic.
Oh, sure. Okay. All right. Anything on Fred's? I can't see everybody. Just let me know. Nope. Okay. No questions for me. Thank you. And, oh, actually, so for, by way of it being a condition, I assume that we don't need Conservation Commission to, if we already even make, I know we're not making decisions tonight, but if the decision came sooner than CONCOM, that's fine. We don't have to worry about it. They'll handle it and it'll all square up.
They need to prove that they are or are not within the 200-foot riverfront area. And they do that by submitting some calculations to Conservation. So it shouldn't affect your decision.
But then I guess in the event that they are, even if Vito thinks that they're not, how does that, how does that change the plan? They have to then come back and revise the plan, do a revised permit?
It depends on the impact. There's, the trigger, the first trigger is, is it intermittent or perennial? If it is, if it's intermittent, everything is fine. If it's perennial, then the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission extends 200 feet from the mean annual high watermark of the Brook, the perennial stream. And then where that 200-foot mark, the first 100 feet is pretty much not on their property. But the second 100 feet, they're allowed 5,000 square feet or 10% of the riverfront area on their property to disturb. And they have to prove that they're under either the 5,000 or the 10%, whichever is greater. If they are, then they're fine. If they're not, then they have to revise their project and that might trigger them coming back to you in the, in the event that that was the case.
Okay, but we don't need to explicitly specify that's the process. That's just part of what would happen regardless. We don't have to.
Correct. What you would do is you would just, as a standard condition, you would always have something that says, in the event that the application, the, the plan changes, the applicant would return to the board if it's considered to be a substantial change, that kind of thing.
Got it. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I have a quick question. It's probably more conservation. Like with a super dry year like this year, would the stream be considered intermittent? Whereas last summer, it rained all summer. I don't know, would the, would the storm affect the stream?
What happens, Amy, is that when we're not in a drought, we look at the brook. We take a walk out into the woods. We look in the brook and if it's dry, it's not considered a perennial stream. It's considered intermittent because it dries up in the, in the summertime. But when we're in a drought, the fallback condition is that you, you apply this computer calculation referred to as stream stats in the DEP manual. And it's a program that takes into account the drainage area and how much water would go that way in a certain storm. And if it reaches a certain volume of water, regardless of whether it's a drought condition or not, then it's considered a perennial stream. So if it has the capacity to capture that much water, it's all done mathematically, especially in a drought year like this.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, let's see. Bill, you had a question going back to traffic. If you want to ask that, that's fine.
Okay. So I was going through the, the traffic report that you provided. Thank you very much. Couple things. One, and I don't know, maybe this is something we need to consider it as, I know if you are making, if you're heading westbound out of the facility, there's a five-ton exclusion to the left on Whitney and a six-ton bridge requirement on the right, if you go to the right. So nobody really should be going to, you know, taking that right-hand turn out of the facility. What Amazon and FedEx have done for us is they, they actually have a sign that reminds the drivers as they're coming out. So I don't know if putting up a sign at, you know, and, and maintaining a sign saying, you know, five-ton exclusion, you know, five tons are over, please turn left. Right? Just as a reminder to the drivers. The other concern I have is in the summary on, in the traffic, the traffic study on Table 4, it has minimum criteria for the 85th, 85th percentile speed, 40 miles an hour. And the looking west, the intersection site distance is 305. But the actual measured distance is 300. So that would be a no to me that the criteria is satisfied, not a yes.
I can have him look at that because he might have done it. 85th percentile was 38. I know he wrote 40 there. So I can ask him to clarify that, the traffic engineer.
Yeah, because that's going to be, that's a really tight corner. And if there's a, you know, an 18-wheeler coming out of that facility.
Yep. Yeah, and he has the 300 feet plus or minus. I can have him maybe nail down an exact measurement.
That would, that would be great. Thank you.
No problem.
You know, I, I would say, you know, if it said 305 plus or minus or 310 plus or minus, okay, that's fine. But to say 300 plus or minus tells me it's probably under 305. But that's, again, I'm just assuming. That was my only comment.
Okay. Okay, any other comments? Laurie also has a director question, planning director questions, comments, and recommendations. Did everyone have a chance to take a look at the follow-up there? I think Laurie stated that outside of landscaping and photometrics, that's pretty well answered. But did the board have any additional questions or comments?
I agree though with Bill. There should be a sign because I was down on Barefoot Road and this isn't Vito's problem. But I was down on Barefoot Road looking at something else for a different committee. And a truck did come out of 100 Barefoot and it turned right. And it went right down Whitney Street and over the bridge. Like even though those 18-wheelers aren't supposed to go over the bridge, it might have been a 10-wheeler. I tried to count the wheels. But it was definitely a tractor trailer and it went over the bridge. And for years I've heard, oh, no, trucks don't go over that bridge. But I saw it.
I can tell you semis go by. I live between Barefoot and that bridge. And I can tell you, I hear semis every day going by my house. So I know they go over the bridge.
The, the bridge is.
But I'm not saying it's from, it's from your facility. I'm just saying, you know, that they do go past my house.
And I did see the postings too. I get to the end of the street and like he said, it says, don't go left if you're over 5,000. So then you go right if you're the truck. And then you get to the bridge and there's a sign that says, you can't go over if you're 6,000. But what do you do? You're an 18-wheeler and you're already at the bridge. You can't turn around. I think there needs to be a sign at the end of Barefoot too. Like you really can't go left or right.
I, I believe there's a sign because we had asked for an advanced sign on that up near the 290 Bridge. So you could see it at the end of the street, but.
Yeah, there is, but there's still nowhere for a semi to go once they see that sign.
Yeah.
Right? And they're going down into the neighborhoods.
The bridge ratings and the truck exclusions are supposed to be coordinated with the GPS programs that they have. Some use it, some don't. And again, the bridge is, it's rated for six tons. It doesn't mean that they can't physically go across. It's, it's kind of like speeding. You can, can speed till you get caught, I guess. But the ramifications are also that it could collapse, but.
Right. Well, but it also wears out the bridge a lot, a lot more than what it normally would, right? And so that's the concern too, is that now the town is paying for, you know, additional cost to repair the bridge.
Well, the, the repair on that bridge is under the jurisdiction of the state traffic program. The Department of Transportation will take care of that. They're the ones who, who evaluated and changed the rating. I don't know where it is on the list, but there's a lot of bridges across the Commonwealth that are under the same restriction and are on the list to get replaced at some point. But in the meantime, we do have a bridge rating that's reduced to six tons.
Okay, we also had a letter from the fire chief and it looks like his concerns are addressed. However, he does, he does mention a different plan date. I assume it's here or there. He has June 28th. Letter from you, Laurie, says June 29th. I assume that's of little significance.
Yeah, he based that, that comment letter on the most up-to-date.
Okay.
Plan set.
Okay. All right. Any further questions or comments? Okay, so it sounds like next steps. Vito, you're still working with Fred to some extent. We have a couple of things from Laurie's letter. Anything else that the applicant needs for the next hearing?
I think we're good.
Okay. All right, so with that, are we ready to make a motion to continue? Now, we're looking at September 20th at 6:00 PM. Does that work for you?
Yeah, that works. We should most likely meet with Conservation before that meeting anyway. So we'd have some input on the stream by then anyway.
Okay, great.
And Carrie, when I was, excuse me, when I was putting together the draft motions, I forgot that we were meeting at 7 o'clock now instead of 6 o'clock. So you would want to modify the times to reflect the 7 o'clock start versus a 6 o'clock start.
Okay. Do we, is that what we're doing? 7 o'clock? We're back to 7? I know there's confusion tonight. Do we like?
You know, I know, we, we were discussing this in the office. We know for sure that the ZBA said that they wanted to start at 6:00 PM. And we were disagreeing amongst ourselves whether the planning board wanted to start at 7. So if you want to be at 6, we're fine with that. If you want to be at 7, we're fine with that. We just need clear direction as to where you want to be at 6 or 7.
What, for board members, does it matter? I've enjoyed the 6, but it doesn't matter. If we, 7 is better. I understand schedules and dinners and whatnot. Any thoughts or?
Well, I think just the meetings typically run so long. I like starting earlier.
I like 6 too.
Yeah, starting at 6.
Amy, is that okay with you?
Yep.
All right, poor Millie won't get to weigh in.
Where'd she go?
She's in the.
Oh, that's right.
She raised her hand. She just raised her hand.
Okay, hold on. Millie, do you have a preference? I'm, I'm good with 6. Can you guys hear me? Yes, we can. Okay. Okay. All right, thank you. I'll just leave you here because we're concluding to the motion to continue. I just won't ask for your vote on that, but I'm, I will, I'll keep you on the panel. Okay. Okay, so if that's okay with everybody and staff, it sounds like it makes no difference to you as well and probably easier for all of us. Is there a motion to continue the public hearing to September 20th at 6:00 PM?
I moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Whoops, aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, so we will see you back on September 20th at 6:00 PM.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thanks so much. All right. For the purpose of the minutes, Millie Milton has rejoined the meeting. Next on our agenda, we have the continued public hearing for 75 Ridge Road Special Permit Common Driveway and Special Permit with Site Plan Review. So let's see, bring in, I see Damon here. No, Damon, I see you three times. Oh, I think others from your team may have called in the same. So we'll just, should we bring in all? It looks like. Yep.
And also Scott Cameron.
Oh, I see Scott. Up there's Damon and then one more. Oh, two Damons. So let's see.
Yeah, the other one is, is Ben because I had to send him the link.
Oh, okay. All right. Anyone else from your team waiting to get called in?
Just me, Ben, and Scott.
Got it. Okay, so it looks like everybody's here. So let me resituate my paperwork.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep, yep, we can.
Evening, members of the board, staff. For the record, my name is Scott Cameron of Moore Cameron Group. I am here on behalf of Down East Residential Inc. Damon is here. Ben is here. I actually may make this a quick, a quick meeting for you. We are going through some kind of last-minute fine tuning of the plans and specifications with staff. And I think it would be a better use of our time to reconcile that. As you know, we're, we're going through between Fred and Vincent at the Conservation Commission. A lot of coordination. There's a lot of detail in the plans. And I think we would be better served And I think uh, we would be better served uh, uh, reconciling that. And coming back at your September twentieth meeting. So I would actually like to request a continuance tonight um. For that reason.
Okay, do you have, um, do you need any clarification or anything from the board so that you feel like you have everything you need or yours, you have staff?
I, yeah, I feel like we're like on the finish line, but there's just a few last things we need to work out. Um, uh, then, you know, staff has been unbelievable to work with, so just. It's been a lot, a lot of thought put into this one, so.
Okay. Um, Steph, anything that you would add that you'd want them to know, or I suppose you can communicate after the fact anyway, but any comments or thoughts or?
Yeah, I think we just have to do uh, some back and forth to get on the same page with the various draft conditions. So I, I'm confident that we'll be able to uh, come to a consensus. And I would recommend continuing the public hearing to six ten P M on September twentieth.
Okay. All right, great. So with that, is there a motion to continue the public hearing for seventy-five Ridge Road? Special apartment common driveway and special permit site plan review to September twentieth, twenty twenty-two at six ten P M.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. All right, well, great. Good to see you guys and we'll see you back in a few weeks.
Likewise. Enjoy the rest of your summer.
My printer went for a wild ride for no reason.
I, I think that this is the best uh, best option is to just continue the public hearing so that we can. Get on the same page because obviously we uh, kind of went haywire at the last minute there, so.
No problem. I appreciate the applicant um, working with us through it. Okay, next we have um, a request to continue without testimony to November first. So hold on here. So we have one eighty, continue public hearing for one eighty Barefoot Road, special permit with site plan review. So for this, um, they've requested to continue without testimony to November first, twenty twenty-two. Is there anything you want to add to that, Lori, or? Nope, okay.
No, not at this time. I, I am expecting that they will likely withdraw prior to that date. But um, they're not one hundred percent on that, so they requested a continuance at this point.
Okay, and I guess that's not too far away. Um, if something happens to change with that meeting in the interim for some reason, we, how do we? It's not that far away. I guess November is closer than I think when I, so.
Yes, like I said, I, I anticipate that they will likely uh, withdraw, but I will keep you posted on the developments.
Okay, so um, is there a motion then to continue the public hearing for one eighty Barefoot Road to November first, twenty twenty-two at six P M?
So moved, so moved. Second.
Amy's second. Millie has made the motion, Amy's second and all in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, that hearing has been continued. Okay. Next on our agenda, we are to hold business. I feel like I have an outdated um. Version of the agenda for some reason. Do we have, uh, oh no, it's here. I see Newton Street. Do we want to discuss uh, Newton Street next? Would that make sense? I see some people on the line. Is that? I see the Newton Street Bond, discussion of release of security bond at three twenty-five Newton Street, NOR Construction LLC. Uh, we have, uh, we have other things as well, but I think in this case we have um, people on the phone. Do we mind if we jump to that? Does that, are we ready for that one?
Sure.
Sure. Sounds good.
Okay, great. Um, so this is just a board discussion, not a public hearing, so do I need to let in any attendees to speak or discuss?
Uh, I believe that's up to you. There's no real presentation. I can give you some history. Uh, you all have letter from the uh, attorney for Mr. Ramadan. Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what the protocol is for letting them speak. I don't, I, I've talked to town council. What we have is, I had given you a memo back in January indicating that pretty much all the physical work on, along Newton Street had been completed. Um, there was some outstanding easements that were required. There was a submission by attorney representing Mr. Ramadan uh, early in the spring. Uh, with a draft easement. Um, unfortunately, with everything that was going on in my office, I apologize, but I did not uh, follow up on that. It did not get resolved. Um, but what we are doing now is we have, we are working with um, town council to review that document and put it in its proper format. He has agreed to work with the attorney Mansour. Um, uh, I'm not sure, I think uh, from Lane McNamara uh, to get that resolved. And what we were hoping to do is to have the planning board vote to release those funds upon completion of the executed easement and recording of the plan.
Okay. So I'm just trying to pull up. Do we have the original letter? For some reason, I see your notes.
Well, when you say original letter, I, I, you need to clarify that for me because it goes back to two thousand and six.
Oh.
So which letter are you referring to? The letter from the attorney or the letter from me in January? That started the discussion.
Letter dated July twentieth, I guess. Is that what letter you were referring to?
The letter dated July twentieth, is that from Lane McNamara?
Yes.
You, you should all have that.
Okay, so it came to me as a forward without the letter. If it came to everybody else, that's okay. I'm just trying to find it. Um, just, does everyone else have that letter?
I just have one quick question for Fred while we're looking for the letter. So since you're working with town council now, are you looking for us to release it tonight? Or are we waiting until you finish with town council?
Well, that's, that's the crux of the discussion. If you, if the board is comfortable, I'm here to represent to you that the physical work is done. What needs to happen is the easement needs to be put in the proper form and then executed uh, by the applicant. And then recorded at the registry in, in order to wrap up the process. Um, if you're comfortable releasing the money contingent upon town council verifying that all of that has been done. That's the vote I'd ask you to do tonight. If you're not, what we can do is we can provide you confirmation that it's been executed and recorded at the registry and then you can vote. That would be up to you. I know that um, attorney Dineshki had indicated that we should really respond within forty-five days, given the uh, notice that we got in July. And so I think that what's appropriate is at least some confirmation, and I think he's going to take care of that. Um, to let them know what you decide tonight and that you will act one way or the other um, once the. Vote is taken on contingent upon recording or after the recording is done.
And Carrie, I have a hard copy of uh, that letter in my hand. Unfortunately, I don't have it electronically, but if you'd like me to read that into the record, I'd be happy to do so.
Is it super long or?
Uh, it's, it's about half a page.
Would board members like to hear the letter or? Okay. All right, if you don't mind, Lori, that'd be great.
Sure, it says, uh, Dear Ms. Martinek and Attorney Dineshki, please be advised that this office represents NOR Construction LLC with regard to the performance security bond for completion of various roadwork adjacent to the construction project located at three twenty-five Newton Street, North Barrow, Mass. Pursuant to its permit, NOR Construction was required to provide a bond to the town of North Row to secure widening of the Newton Street roadway. NOR Construction provided a bond of which there is fifteen thousand dollars remaining to be released. The town engineer has acted in an arbitrary and capricious manner by failing to approve the proposed easement that was provided by NOR Construction to the town engineer. The town engineer has failed to act on NOR Construction submission for over one year. Release of the bond is contingent upon the town engineer's review and final approval of NOR Construction submissions enclosed as an email chain between NOR Construction and the town engineer. Wherein the town engineer has failed to respond to NOR Construction's requests for over sixty days. Pursuant to gen- general law, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one U, NOR Construction hereby demands release and return of the bond within forty-five days from receipt of this correspondence. If the town fails to respond or provide adequate information as to why the bond is being with it uh. Is being within forty-five days of receipt of a demand for the return of the bond, all obligations under the bond shall cease and terminate by operation of law. Any deposit shall be returned and any such covenant shall be void. General law, chapter sixty-one, section eighty-one U, I look forward to hearing from you. Very truly yours, Mansurin Ahmed. And then there's a, a couple of emails attached.
Okay. Um, so it looks like attorney Dineshki is saying that. Uh, let's see, the finalization of the easement document and the easement plan would be required prior to the approval of release of the security. So is he advising that um, we should have that all finalized before we vote on it? But tonight at least acknowledge that that's what we're waiting for. Is that the action that would make sense or?
It's up to you. I mean, personally, I feel comfortable uh, with you making the motion contingent upon approval of easement documents by town council and recording of those documents at the Worcester Registry of Deeds. The benefit of going forward with that type of motion is that if they're able to wrap this up in the next week or two, then uh, they could get a release of the um, performance guarantee sooner versus later because obviously our next meeting isn't until September twentieth. Um, there, you know, uh, the drain is. So one of the attachments to this letter was a drainage easement. And they were required to submit both a drainage easement as well as a roadway access easement. So um, the roadway access easement isn't missing. Uh, but apparently they have an easement plan which shows it. So it's just a matter of um. Having attorney Donaski work with the attorney to finalize the language and uh, the, the plan to ensure that everything's kosher. And that it conforms to the original plan that was approved by the planning board back in two thousand and six, I believe. In two thousand and fourteen, I know there have been a, a number of dates back.
The final plan was approved in fourteen.
Okay. Um, any board comments or thoughts on the preferred approach?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that as well. I think, you know, if we're releasing it, I mean, if the work is done and they're just waiting for some legal items to get completed, then. Yeah, I mean, it's done.
Right, I'd agree with that as well.
Okay, Millie, that's okay with you as well?
Yep.
Okay, so um, any other questions or comments? No, okay. Okay, so then is there a motion to release the cash performance guarantee in the amount of fifteen thousand seventy-two dollars and nine cents plus interest to NOR Construction LLC for Newton Street, excuse me, for Newton Street roadway improvements subject to the approval of easement documents by town council and recording of those documents at the Worcester Registry of Deeds?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, so that takes care of that. Thanks Fred for sticking through that.
Thank you for your patience. Sometimes things get lost in the shuffle.
Well, no one is going to let you retire till this is resolved, so.
Nobody said anything about retiring.
Okay, um, great. Next on the agenda, getting back to old business. We have um, discussed small wireless facility, five G technology proposed for thirty-five feet, six inches, inches replacement pole within the main street um, roadway within the vicinity of two sixty-five, two sixty-seven Main Street. No, right of way, I'm sorry. R O W is right of way, Main Street right of way. Um, okay, so this is, in terms of kicking off this discussion, is this related to the what's come before the board selectman or?
It is.
Okay.
So John Kader had uh, forwarded me this application about a month ago. And he wanted to know if the planning board had any uh, comments or concerns, uh, recommendations that uh, the, they wanted to forward to the board of selectmen to consider as part of the poll petition. So I put it on the agenda. Um, I did a review of the application packet. Um, I prepared a little review letter for you folks. Um, I personally did not have any concerns about this specific application. Uh, but uh, certainly I am interested in taking back, taking down any feedback you might have. And I'd be happy to submit those comments to the board of selectmen on your behalf.
Okay, um. I do have a question about, this is one of those exemption type cases in general, correct?
Yeah, it's um, it's one of those uh, circumstances where the, so we have a Copelman and Page narrative uh, that kind of provides guidance to municipalities as to what jurisdiction you actually have on projects of this type. And um, so it is kind of an exemption. The town doesn't have the usual amount of power uh, to regulate uh, these items, but there, there is a few things that you can comment on. So particularly having to do with aesthetics. Um, so. There, there were three major things that they had talked about. One had to do with like the distance between each facility. Uh, so the, the town would have some jurisdiction there. So the important thing is that whatever the municipality requires cannot be a significant hardship.
Okay, any initial board comments? Amy, you have a comment?
Yeah, um, this is all, you know, the small cells are new, but going back to when I first started on the planning board. We have a section in our bylaw for wireless facilities. And. Um, I agree with what Lori said, you know, there are certain things that we can talk about aesthetics. But there's also, when they talk about you can't prohibit it. Um, you can also try to talk about location because by saying the location on the pole there is what they want. If you ask them to move it a hundred feet down the street, as long as they can't prove that that's prohibitive, then it could happen. My biggest concern is it's right in front of Saint Bernadette's School. It's twelve feet onto their property. And when I started here on the planning board, there was a big pushback from Saint Bernadette's about cell towers near their school. And this isn't a cell tower, this is an antenna, but an antenna, a cell tower did go up on uh, behind the police station. And I was just curious, like in the letter they wrote, that these small cells are to take the place of um, where their macros aren't extending far enough. A question I would have for the selectmen are, is there an AT&T antenna on the tower that's already down the street? I measured it today with the G I S and it's about fifteen hundred feet away. And one of the major parts of our zoning bylaw with cell towers are, if you build a cell tower, you have to allow others to relocate or co-locate on your tower. I'm just wondering from AT&T if they consider loc- co-locating on the antenna that's already there. Because when you look at their map. Because when you look at their map, and I could pull it up. Their map, which is very hard to read, has colors that are pink and orange, and it shows where they're lacking coverage. But it shows all of Main Street, doesn't have coverage, so I'm wondering if they put their antennas on the current. Tower, if that would take care of the problem without having to put it right in front of Saint Bernadette's school. I also have pictures going up and down Main Street, and there's like a pole in front of almost every building. So why I would ha- ask the selectmen to ask AT&amp;T. To prove that if, that it needs to be in front of the school, like they could move it to the corner of Bartlett. There's a pole in the corner of Bartlett. And then it's not right in front of the school. I just know from our old bylaws with uh wireless facilities, you had to be a thousand feet away from the school. This pole would bring it within like two hundred feet of the school. I just, um, I also had, would have a request that the selectmen have a policy. I forwarded um, the policy from the Burlington, Mass, where the air board of selectmen can um ask for. Think, I don't have it up, let me see. It's like five hundred dollars. Or one hundred dollars, let me see, I've got it right here. Five hundred dollars to cover five locations. Like, there's a whole policy and we could forward it to them. I asked the board of selectmen when they did their last two. Approvals and they don't have a policy and I don't think they're charging any fees. So I would think we are, as a town, would be remiss not to have a application policy and charge the fees that we're allowed to charge.
Do we need a policy for that? I don't, I don't mean for you to have to have the answer, but do, because it looks like KP Law is saying. We, it's already established that we could charge those fees. So do we need a policy to do so, or are these fees just allowed?
I don't know, I think, like everything in town, there's an application process where there's a form you fill out and it tells you what the fee is. I just think it makes it easier for the town and for the applicant. I don't know if the town administrator can just say, okay, you owe us five hundred dollars. And then you'd have to keep a checklist of, because the five hundred covers up to five antennas. It just seems with the formal process. It'd be easier to follow and easier for both sides. And it's a pretty basic policy. And it follows what KP Law said too, it's just, they just put it in writing. Also, um, one thing we're allowed to have too is standards. And say like my neighborhood, my neighborhood is all underground wiring. If. AT&amp;T wanted to come in and put a cell up on my neighborhood. You'd wanna standard that would say, you know, you have to use like a pretty lamp post, you just can't put random poles in. Just to make it look nicer, there are established neighborhoods. That don't have telephone poles, so if someone needs a pole to put any antenna on, it would be nice to put it. On um, something that looks nice in the neighborhood. It probably isn't any more money than the pole. And I think per town council, we're allowed to have that sort of policy. Also, in the class that I went to on the five G, they said, if you had to pick antenna location. And say there's two antennas side by side, you would not pick the one right in front of someone's bedroom. So, and that falls back to the school, there's like so many. Poles on Main Street, there's one even across the street from Saint Bernadette's. Why did they pick the pole that is right next to the school? So I don't know what others think about that, but I would love to write a letter. As a planning board, and if not, I'll write it as a resident. To ask them to ask AT&amp;T to look at a location that's not right in front of the school. They're very close, it's not like it's that far away.
Any board thoughts on that? Bill?
Yeah, so one of the things we do in IT whenever we're we're setting up wifi. Um, is we do what's called a heat map, right? And we'll literally go around with a laptop. Around a building and find out what spots have coverage for wifi, what spots, you know, maybe we need to put another access point or another antenna. Um, and I asked this question to the board of selectmen when, when they were talking about the antenna that went up. Or was going to go up in front of um, uh, White Cliffs. And, you know, what I would say is. What we should do is we should have them provide us with a, a heat map. Where are the open spots exactly in North Row now? And then what's your plan to remediate that? Instead of these onesy twosies, you know, well, we need one here, just because we say so. Right? Have a third party come in and have, I mean, we do that for everything else. Right? We have a third party come in to evaluate the downtown or to evaluate. You know, something else in town, we should have a third party evaluation of. This cell heat maps, and then, and then if we need one in that location, if it makes sense, okay, then we can talk about it, but. Right now, we're just taking their word that they need one there.
Any other comments on this?
I don't have anything to add to that, I would just agree with both Bill and Amy's sentiments on this.
Okay, we, we did that back in two thousand fourteen too, when they were putting in a cell tower, we had our own consultant come in. To look at the surrounding areas. And I know these have a short, a shot clock. So it's quick. And they did give us a heat map from their perspective, but it shows like all of Main Street is in the pink. So I don't see why if we moved it over. I'm trying to pull it up, the application, looking for it.
While you're looking for that, Amy, you may. While you're looking for that, um, you mentioned design standards. These would be new design standards? Were you're saying about it?
Yeah, but maybe we can even add them into the bylaws under our, we have some um. Wireless facility, so it would be a change to zoning for next year. I don't know if it's better to do it that way. Because we have a section seven ten oh four oh wireless communications facilities. And I don't know if we can just add the design standards there. Actually, I'd have to look up to how the other towns did it. Where they added it, I think it was in their bylaws.
Okay, but in this case. If we were to create these design standards, the, these. Types of applications are under the jurisdiction of the board of selectmen, correct?
Correct. Yes, and you know, the. Telephone poles are what they are. Um. So I do recommend uh creation of design standards for. Locations where there are underground utilities. But I, I just don't see how. Um. Yeah, like I just can't think of any design standards that would. Really, um. Help. This particular circumstance, I mean, they, the wa- the one application that is before us right now. Um, we're talking about a small equipment ca- uh cabinet. Uh, which is located nearly thirteen feet above the ground. And we're talking about a uh small additional cylinder, which is on top of the telephone pole. So. I like personally to review these on a case by case basis, um, to ensure that. Each one um is palatable. Uh, like, one of the things that I was looking at is to see if, if the telephone pole. Was within a vicinity of a sidewalk, like for example, there are circumstances where you have telephone poles. In sidewalks, which impede ADA access. Uh, because they're an obstruction in the center of the sidewalk, so that's, that's a circumstance where. Um. The, the town would have the power to improve that scenario. To require the telephone pole to be relocated, so it's no longer an obstruction to the sidewalk. Um, but I, I personally think that the review on a case by case basis. Um, will help ensure that there isn't. A negative result. Um, but when it comes to underground uh facilities. I, I think design standards would be helpful. Certainly, we wouldn't want. The erection of a telephone pole in a location where all of the utilities are underground. That would be an eyesore.
Bill, you had a comment as well?
Yeah, to, to, to Lori's comment, um, while I agree with the, you know, the underground facilities, you know, that. It, it's forty-four inches, so that's almost four feet wide. This is, this is a fairly large box. Thirteen feet up in the air, that makes a perfect, nice big sign for AT&amp;T to put their placard up, right? We don't want those all across town. Especially because these are small cells, so they're gonna be looking to put these. Out a lot of these around town, these are designed to be lo- very localized. Right? So once, once we do one, you're gonna be getting all sorts of requests for many more. You know, especially if their heat map shows that Main Street is an open area. You know, that's one of the differences between three G and five G, three G went a further area. Uh, five G is, is a very small distance type of technology.
Hmm.
So my concern is, is once we do one, you're gonna, you're gonna have be, have requests for a bunch more. So if we don't set the design standard now, um, you know, we're gonna be caught later.
So design standards, um, whether we set them or not, it wouldn't, it would not be a part of this. Our recommendation of the board of selectmen, that is that a separate, we would have to consider for bylaws, is that what we would? Whether we pursue them or not, is that a secondary piece to this equation?
So what they're, what they're asking for is they are asking for comments on this particular application. So, um, you know, certainly there is the opportunity. As part of the same letter to make some more wide-reaching recommendations. Or it could be separate, so it could be something that the board chews on for a little bit. And then uh, once. Come up with consensus for recommendation or design standards or the bylaw changes or whatever. Can forward it at that time, so I think, uh, you know, the more timely. Issue here is that they are looking for recommendations on this particular application.
Okay, so, so far, it sounds like the board, a majority of the board is in agreement that we recommend to move it away from the school. Yeah, just, just, um, if you disagree, please just speak up. Um, that, to the board may wanna consider a policy that includes a fee, I mean. Obviously, because this is going forward then, some sort of policy that contains fees. Could we make a recommendation, um, to Bill's point about we wouldn't want any signage on, any signage allowed? On the. Box or pole or whatever? Is that what you're saying, Bill? You were concerned about signage?
I, I do think that there's a requirement to have a certain amount of safety signage. So we could differentiate between like advertising type signage versus safety signage.
Okay, are there any other design standards that would apply here? That's outside of a bylaw?
I could send. The um, the one from Burlington and we can review it and talk about it. See if they have any ideas that we wanna incorporate.
Okay, even as it relates to this recommendation?
Oh, no, not for this one, I'm talking about the future, sorry.
Oh, no, no, okay. Um, and Bill, you mentioned um, requesting that they do a heat map. Analysis of that area or?
Well, I would say the whole town, if they're gonna start requesting these small cells.
So what would be within the reasonable jurisdiction of this application, though? Do you think we have to narrow it or?
Yeah, for this one, you're gonna wanna go to, you know. I don't know off the top of my head what the uh ranges for these devices, but. You know, probably at least, I would think, you know, a mile or two mile radius. And find out what the heat map is for, or, or what the um. You know, what the distance that this will cover.
Right, I looked it up online and it ranged anywhere between like. One thousand feet, two thousand feet, and some of them said a third of a mile, so I guess it would. We'd need a consultant to give us more information, like you said, on how far the range is. I'm gonna bring up the heat map they sent us with the application. And turn it sideways. So this is what they sent us, and as you can see, it's like. The pink is the worst and the orange is the next, but it's, they, I find they send us these maps and you can't even read it. Like, I don't know if anyone else, it looks better to you, but it's very hard to differentiate where the pink is and the orange.
Mm-hmm.
And if I'm looking at that map, right, and.
Yeah.
The orange, if the orange or the white are what they're trying to cover, then they're too far away.
Right, and the next page it shows, like, this is Memorial Field where I'm point pointing, and this is where the tall tower is. So if they put some antennas on there, would it cover the section? That they're looking to cover, so this is the next page. It says if they put the antenna in next to Saint Bernadette's here, they're gonna cover this area. So, there's a pole right here on the corner of Bartlett where there are no homes, there's no schools. You move it this way a little bit further, and it moves this stuff a little bit further, but. At least it takes it away from the school, and I don't think it, it really makes a huge difference where that coverage blob would be. If you move it over. If I took this big circle and moved it over like. To here.
So then, um, i- if they were to move it to the Memorial Field over there, that's where you said the, so that would take. That probably wouldn't cover that zone, they're trying to cover, cover it all.
Well, they're using small antennas here. When they go to these antennas, they use bigger antennas that cover a bigger location. So the way that this map looks pink all here makes me think they don't even have an antenna on this. Big tower, so if they co-located to the tower that we already approved, they might cover. A really big location without needing all the small antennas. Because in their letter, they said that their macro antennas go on the bigger towers, and then they try to fill in. The empty spots by putting in these small ones on the phone poles. But why not start, at least ask the question, why didn't AT&amp;T consider? Putting in a macro site over on the big tower right here. Versus putting in all their small antennas. And sometimes it might come down to, they don't wanna pay the fee to whoever owns that tower. I don't know if that's the reason, but when we had a consultant in, in two thousand and fourteen, he, they, he said the fact that they don't wanna co-locate. Doesn't make you prohibitive, like, as a town, you can say. You know, you have to co-locate here. Because it's open. Like, the only reason that you would be considered prohibitive if you said, no, no antennas at all on Main Street, we're not gonna allow it. But if you say, you know, can you move it a couple feet to the right? And it doesn't affect the school, or can you put in the antenna over here on the tower and see what it does for your zone? It's not being prohibitive. I just know that there was a really big outcry in front of Saint Bernadette's, and I don't know. If the school knows, I don't know if the parents know. And I don't know if they've changed their minds on how they feel about antennas near their kids, but. If it's any indication of how it was a couple years ago. Then I think it's a really bad location to put the antenna right in front of the school.
Fred, did you have something? I thought I saw your hand.
I, yes, thank you. Um, I'm not an expert on these. Um, I do review all the poll petitions for the board of selectmen when they come through. I'm not sure that the ability, they, I don't think they have the ability to just move it a few feet, ten, fifteen feet either way. These, my understanding is these small wireless, uh. Facilities are going on top of existing poles. So they're taking out a. Thirty, thirty-five-foot pole and replacing it with a forty-five-foot pole and then putting this can up on the top. So, the pole, and the poles are set. Distance-wise apart, based upon the wires that are on them and the tension that's on the wires, and they're spaced accordingly. So it's not. They can't just move it ten or twenty feet to the left or ten or twenty feet to the right. The whole idea is that they're just replacing an existing pole. With another pole that's a little bit taller, and it's pretty much. Not, uh, visible. Difference in, in what you would see as you're driving down the road. And so I'm not sure that. Asking them to move it a few feet would be a, a reasonable thing to do. It may not be possible, because what you might end up with. Uh, unexpected consequence. So if they have a pole, two poles, two hundred feet apart, and you ask them to put another one in. You know, fifty feet away, you're just gonna get another pole. And I don't think the goal is to get any more poles. I think it's to try to. Keep the pole countdown to just what it needs to be. That, which is why I think they're replacing existing poles with. Taller poles, but still in the same location with the same amount of wires and support on them.
And following up on Fred's comment, there are a number of poles that already have transformer cabinets on them. Uh, like, in this particular location, if you continue down the road, um, beyond. Beyond Mose. Uh, you'll, you'll see, I wonder if you can zoom in.
Can you see the picture I brought up?
Yeah. Okay, that's a, a photo, yeah. So you can see on the telephone pole down the line. You see that there's already a transformer cabinet.
This one right there.
And then on the one beyond that, there's three. Transformer cabinets.
Yeah.
So I imagine the loading. Um, you know, like, those are probably telephone poles that couldn't accommodate this additional equipment, because. I'm just supposing, I don't know this to be a fact, but I imagine that there is additional loading. Associated with those transformer cabinets. And, um.
Further down the road here.
On the other side of the street is particularly where I'm, I'm looking at.
But on this side of the street, like here's Saint Bernadette's, I'm not sure exactly which pole it's on. But it looks like there are a couple further down the street this way. I should have gotten a picture further down.
Yeah, the one that has the light.
Yep.
Is the one that they are proposing to put this equipment on.
So, at this time, there is not a, an antenna on the pole.
No.
Okay, I thought that that, they were replacing the pole with an antenna as well. But they're replacing the pole and adding an antenna.
Over across the street here before Mose. There's another pole, and there's no transformers on it. It, it's just that much further away from the school. So. If I measured on the GIS map from this pole. To the schools back there, it's like a hundred feet from the church or less, but if you go to the school, it's probably two, two fifty. But if you moved it across the street. At least it would be that much further. From the school.
I, I didn't even think they could put an antenna within a thousand feet of the school, so.
Right, we couldn't in the past. But now with these small cell antennas, they're changing rules. Cause they're not considering it any, um, a, a tower.
It's, but it's a WCF, which is, doesn't have to be a tower, it's an antenna. I mean, it basically says that in the definitions, you know?
Great. I agree with that.
So, is it, the, I mean, they'll obviously have to do the further deep dive and. And even bring it forward, the possibility forward, but do we want to at least make the recommendation that they? Um, consider either. Uh, moving to the Bartlett Corner, moving, co-locating on Memorial Field, or moving across to Mose with the point being. To just get it further away from the school as possible? Is that the board sentiment on this one?
Yes.
Okay.
I think so. I mean, I'd like to even go further than Mose. If we can. Just to get it that, a thousand feet from the school at least.
So as far as possible, with a couple of suggestions. Um, ideally a thousand feet. And with possibly co-locating on Memorial, on the Memorial Field. Is it right on the field?
It is. It's behind the police station. It's in between the police station and Memorial Field. But I do think they should at least ask the question to AT&T, like. Why didn't they co- locate one of their macro antennas on top of that tower? And would that? Help alleviate their problems on Route twenty?
I, I guess I'd also like to understand why they don't have to adhere to the thousand-foot setback from the schools.
Yeah. I mean, this is an antenna, and that's definitely in the. Definitions of a wireless communication facility. Do we know why that doesn't apply?
Could ask Attorney Danesky, he. Said that these new small wireless cells don't fall under our bylaws.
Which is strange, though, because really it is in that definition.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty. The only thing I think he might use. I have the two thousand and nineteen bylaws on, on page seven, one, two, three. It says there are some exemptions. And it says a side mountain mounted WCF not protecting the height of an existing building. It talks about putting it on a building.
Right.
It didn't bring poles into it back then, because this technology wasn't.
Um, this, this regulation was specifically passed. For the rollout of the five G technology. So, it, it was put in place after the zoning bylaw was adopted. And it does, um, specifically identify the types of facilities that are covered by this FCC rule. And, um, that's on page one of the KP Law Update, if you wanna refer to that. It was sent to you. Uh, so there are six different criteria. And, uh, this specific facility that they're interested in getting permitted. For, um, complies with these criteria. So it's not. It's not what exists at Memorial Field. It's just not the same animal. It's like apples and oranges.
Right, but in their letter, they, at the very beginning of their letter, they said they're installing these. Because they don't have coverage in between their macro sites, and their macro sites are the biggest. Antenna, so I'm just wondering if they've ever been suggested to. Why not put up a macro antenna on top of a tower? And fix the situation like. Can't they put the five G antennas up there? On the tower?
I, I don't believe that the, uh, Board of Selectmen has the power to deny. So what they have the power to do is they have the power to put reasonable conditions on. But if you go through the guidance, it says.
But I think they can ask for a different location, cause I don't think you're denying it. If you're asking, like, even in Burlington, they say, you know, you have to go to certain areas first, keep it away from schools or residential. And. I remember in two thousand and fourteen, the consultant. Said, you're not denying it if you're asking him to move it to a location that's more preferable for your town. Like, if we ask them to move it. Down the street and it still has the effect. Of the coverage that they're looking for. Then we're not denying it. We're just asking him, asking them to. Move it.
Well, I guess it was the point of this memo, just to ask the questions that we would have asked, and it's up to the Board of Selectmen to determine. I, I mean, some, in some cases, they can't do anything about it, they're just putting it out there, asking the question. Is the point just for us to be able to relay the questions we would have normally asked? And these are some of our questions.
Yep. Sure, cause I do think they're having a presentation. There's probably someone from AT&T at the meeting, I'm not sure.
Well, so far, is there anything that we've talked about that a board member, I just wanna at least create a letter that represents. A majority of the board, and then if there's something that doesn't, you could always attend as a resident and voice other concerns or further concerns or whatever the case. But I just wanna make sure as a board, there are certain things we either would like the board selectmen to ask. Questions that we would have asked, um, and any other suggestions. So is there anything else that we would? Add, or is there anything on this that we've already talked about that someone does not agree with?
Another thing in the KP Law Memo. Is that the FCC, the AT&T has to prove that it doesn't result in human exposure. To RF frequencies in excess of government regulations. And what Burlington did, and we actually did it on our other. Antenna installations, is after it's installed. The applicant has to show that the frequencies. Aren't, are within the standards, you know? I think there should be a condition, no matter where they put it in. That, once it's fully installed and operational, and what we said before was ninety days. That an engineer had to come out and test it, and make sure it's within the. RF. Regulations, the government regulations. And actually, if Bob was here tonight, I was gonna ask him that, because we have a couple antennas in town. And the conditions say that. An annual report is supposed to be submitted every July. And that must have been something standard, because the Burlington regulations say the same thing, that every July. The applicants have to submit a report that they're meeting the government regulations. And if they're not, then they have to take them down. So. Um. I can share the KP Law thing if you want, I have it out, but it talks about.
Yeah, that would be great, cause I can't open mine.
Okay. Let's see.
I don't know why.
I have so many things open, it's hard to. Okay, here we go. So here's the KP Law. And it talks about facilities, structures fifty feet or less, which the telephone poles are. And it says, it's number six, the facilities do not result in human exposure to radio frequency radiation. In excess of the applicable safety standards. Um, and in the. Letter that they wrote us, they, they said that it isn't, but in our previous applications. We always had a condition that they came back with a report stating that we're, they're within the rules. And that would be something I'd wanna ask the selectmen. To have them come back ninety days. After it's operational and, and show what the RF frequency is.
Mm-hmm.
Make sure it's within the rules. So this is where it says they can charge a fee. Shot clock. And these are the aesthetics that we can set up. I don't know if anybody wants to read them or.
So, was this sent to us in the memo? Is that what the memo has in it?
So, when I, when I emailed you folks, and I, I know you had emailed me and said that you had trouble. Uh, downloading the plans, it was the same email, so there was this. This, uh, PDF document from Copman and Page. And then there was the, uh, the, the application packet.
Did the selectmen have a copy of this?
They do.
Okay.
I know they can't outright deny it, but I do think they can ask about. Different location.
Amy?
Yeah?
You go back up to the top for a second?
Sure. Which?
All the way up.
Okay.
The very beginning. So, one of the items right there, um, which one was it? Number two. No more than three cubic feet in volume. For the antenna equipment. Oh, excluding associated antenna equipment, okay. So the box wouldn't be part of that. The box is part of the other.
I don't know if these are different than, than the White Cliffs one, but it does say they're pretty big. I mean, the boxes, I wanna think say they weighed like a hundred pounds.
Well, they said it was like forty-four inches by twenty-one inches. So I'm just wondering if that's more than twenty-eight cubic feet in volume.
I added it up and I didn't think so, but I'm not a pro at doing cubic feet.
Yeah, I saw like three cubic feet, and that's what, what I wanted to look at. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Other thoughts on this one?
So what are we gonna do?
Well, since I love, this is what I have written down, and Lori, you might have other stuff written down. I have the original set that we talked about, so. Um, moving it away from the school with a couple of different suggestions, at least a thousand feet if possible. Also suggesting maybe the Bartlett Corner, uh, across the street by Mose, co-ly, could they co-locate a Memorial Field? Um. Uh, along these lines, why is there not the one thousand foot setback, feet setback from the schools? Um, we're wondering why that doesn't apply. We have a suggestion of, perhaps not for this, but going forward, some sort of policy on fees. Um. Consideration in the future for design standards. We had, um. Condition of no advertising signage, um, recognizing that safety signage is required. And, um, condition, possible condition of ninety days, after ninety days of operation, after operation, an engineer would test and make sure. That it's within regulations in terms of the, um. The fre, the radio frequency radiation. Or whatever safety standards are specified here in forty-seven CFR. Did I catch everything?
I think so.
Okay, is there anything on that list that does not make, does not sound? Like the board. Majority agrees? Okay. Lori, did you have anything else that you caught that I didn't?
Uh, well, there was, uh, just a question that was asked about what the range is of this specific tower. Of small wireless. Installation.
Okay. Okay, any other con, so, the, their review, the board reviews it. Prior, before we next meet.
Correct, so this is on the Board of Selectmen's agenda, gosh, um. I, um. I wrote it down, but I'm not sure where.
Uh, the Board of Selectmen's next meeting is September twelfth.
Thank you, that's the date.
Okay.
Oh yeah, I put it on the, um, Planning Director Questions, Comments, and Recommendations.
Okay, so we do draft a separate memo from the board?
I will. So what I'll do is I'll draft that memo, I'll email it to you folks. Uh, give you a couple of days to confirm, I'll give you a deadline. And then, um. And then um if I if I get feedback by the deadline, I'll modify and then submit. If I don't get any feedback by the deadline, then I'll just go ahead and submit the letter.
Okay. That sounds good. For um our next our next planning board meeting, we had September sixth, so by we keep pushing to the September twentieth, is that assuming that we don't have a meeting on September sixth?
That's what I was assuming.
Okay.
I know that you, Carrie and Amy are unable to attend. And uh nobody is going to be interested in going forward with a a public hearing if uh two of you aren't gonna be present, so we don't actually have any business currently on the agenda for September sixth, so if you'd like to cancel that meeting, I'd say it's safe to go ahead and do so.
Okay, so um Bill and Anthony and Millie, you still would make a quorum if you wanted to continue to meet. Someone would have to chair the meeting. Um, is that some, would you guys still want to meet or are you comfortable with cancelling to the twentieth or what are your thought, or trying to schedule, I don't know what the options are to try to schedule, if there's even the need to schedule another meeting in September? Is there anything else with bylaws or other consideration that would make it so we need that time?
Do we have any deadlines we need to meet on by then?
No.
No, okay. I I wouldn't mind a birthday present.
Is that your birthday?
It is.
Now you can go out and celebrate.
All right, well, let's assume anyway, we don't meet then, just for the purposes of right now. Um, it sounds like Laurie, your plan for that letter works and is our only choice, because we're not possibly meeting, so that's great, thank you for that. Um, next on the agenda, we have the Online Complete Streets Survey, which is available on the DPW webpage from August fifteenth to August twenty-ninth. Is there anything you wanted to say about that?
Um, well, I'm just really hoping that folk folks will fill out the survey, we will be uh following up the survey with a a Zoom meeting, it'll be more of a in-person presentation and a feedback session that's gonna take place at some point in September, the date has not yet been identified. Um, but this initial survey will really be helpful in helping us identify priority projects. Um, so if uh those of you who are listening can fill out the survey and also forward the flyer um or the survey to others that you know are residents of the town in Northborough, that would be fabulous, uh the more the merrier certainly when it comes to survey results.
Great. And then it looks like if we were to try to make it clear what's in it for everybody, th- this makes us eligible for certain grants or?
Yes, so there is some money, uh so the Complete Streets Program, the next phase of the Complete Streets Program, once we have completed our prioritization plan, provides up to four hundred thousand dollars in grant funding to do physical improvements. And having a prioritization plan also provides us with extra points on other grant applications. Um, so it'll make our grant application more competitive if we have uh asked for funding for a project that is identified as a priority on in our prioritization plan, so uh this is a really important process. And this really is uh residents' opportunities to voice uh their concerns about, in particular, um maybe gaps in the sidewalk network, locations where you'd like to see improvements to uh existing sidewalks, crosswalks, ramps, pedestrian signals, as well as bicycle facilities.
Okay, sounds great. So everybody should be filling that out, and I think we can probably a couple of board members here can certainly help spread the news as well, so that will that'll be helpful. Um, anything else on that one?
If uh if folks have access to various Northborough Facebook pages and somebody could uh put up the flyer, I'd really appreciate it.
Yeah, definitely, definitely, okay, great. Um, next we have continued discussion of potential zoning bylaw amendments for twenty twenty-three. So when we last spoke, Laurie, I don't know if you, um I can either go through the list or if there's a better way to approach it, I know we talked last time about what we've done in the past versus what may make better sense for efficiency. What do you recommend for knocking out, continuing to knock this out?
Yeah, I have made no progress, as you know, I was on vacation for a week. Um, so I have not done anything as far as advancing uh what we discussed on the zoning priorities. Um, but I I plan to have some updates for you at the September twentieth meeting. So what I was thinking I would do is is kind of start going down the list and making suggested um modifications, uh suggested warrant articles. Um, and then we can start talking about those uh when the time is right. So have nothing to discuss right now, but uh will shortly.
Okay, all right, great. Um, any comments from other board members, if anybody's thought further about what's been mentioned, or did we miss anything last time around? I know it's helpful to see it in the minutes, you could see a full list of what we discussed last time um in the minutes. So I thought that was a good way to recap um what we discussed last time. If was there anything listed here that you um maybe suggested before, but are that are no longer advocating for, or we're still, our list still looks in a spot where I just want Laurie to go on a wild goose chase if anything's come off the table. Is anything off the table or anything additionally on the table?
Would there be any sense in actually looking into small wireless uh adaptation of our bylaw? For those facilities that we are now not able to currently manage?
I think so, at least maybe that's where we add the design standards or or we figure out, do we add them, I don't know. I was gonna look into it, hopefully if I have time within the next month, what Burlington has done, I know I've shared the links, but I haven't really had time to go into it that deep.
Mm-hmm.
Not that it has to be that deep.
Yeah, the question. Yeah, does it still, is it still under the Board of Selectmen though, and not under Planning Board?
But but the laws under which we might, they might use to um approve or accept would be under us, I think, under under the zoning bylaws.
Uh, it could, if if you wanted to maintain the jurisdiction with the Board of Selectmen, it could just be like within the municipal code.
Yeah.
Um, so they they have to approve the poll petition. So they're already looking at it. Um, so I I would personally think that it would make sense that they be the uh permitting authority instead of the Planning Board.
Mm-hmm.
Then our bylaws are just for if a big antenna is going in versus the poles? I don't know if any ones we're gonna put in any more of those, but.
So the Planning Board would still have jurisdiction over the the large towers. Um, but these are mostly a telephone pole.
Yeah.
So personally, I I would think it would make sense that 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 rests with the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
I would love, since we already have it in our bylaws, maybe we can review it and send a memo with if what we have ideas for design standards or.
I'm sure they'd appreciate that.
Okay. Um, great point, anything else then for the zoning bylaws? Okay. Um, consideration of minutes from July fourteenth, uh did everyone have a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Hmm, uh did ever, well, actually, there were a couple of suggested amendments to the minutes. Are there any additional amendments, suggested amendments? Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes from July fourteenth as amended?
And make a motion to approve the minutes from July fourteenth as amended.
Second?
Second.
On favor, Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. And actually, I owe the board, um we talked about doing a memo about all the traffic discussion, and I was waiting to use the minutes as a cheat sheet, and it just came too late for me to um get a memo one time for the board to look at tonight. So that's still on my radar to pull that together. Um. So I will get that over to everyone. Uh, anything for MPIC? Next meeting is this week, this Thursday.
Yep.
Yes, and I'm happy to report that uh the selection committee has identified a consultant. And uh now the town uh uh town administrator is working on a contract negotiation. So I anticipate that we will be moving forward with the downtown revitalization plan in short order.
That's great. It's exciting. And who and you're, Amy, you're on that committee, that subcommittee as well?
I was, yep.
Okay, that's great. Um, let's see. Goals.
Hoping people can meet them at Apple Fest, you know, they'll have a table set up, hopefully, I don't know if it's too soon, but maybe they can set up their first um outreach to the public during Apple Fest. Words in their mouths, but I think they mentioned it.
Yes, I'm I'm hoping that the the contract will be executed by then. And so they'll be able to, they'll be able to attend, I I think that'll be a a golden opportunity for them to get some uh good feedback.
Great, that's exciting. Um, okay, oh, any other um A and R's, lot releases or bonds?
No.
Okay, any subcommittee updates? Nope. Okay, and we are we settling on the next planning board meeting is September twentieth, that's what we've decided. Okay, and at this point, there's no applications that, the the deadline is passed, I'm sure, there's nothing that would come in.
There is nothing, no.
Between that, okay, and I saw the ZBA meeting was canceled for this month, so the next ZBA uh meeting is not till the twenty-seventh?
That's correct.
Okay, um I did want to take a minute to say congratulations to Suzie Slicka for her appointment to the ZBA, I think everybody knows Suzie's been an alternate for for last year or so, and so she was just appointed and congratulations to Suzie.
Nice.
Yeah, so that's exciting, and I also want to thank uh Selectmen Hirsch and Selectmen Wickstead for really um going to bat and and paving the way, um going um advocating for moms to be part of uh town government, it's really difficult to be involved and volunteer, and they really made a point to um make that important, that someone in a position that maybe has a million things to do, but still wants to be involved to be able to do it, and I really appreciate that as a mom volunteering as well, and I think that's important that we encourage that, and so I'm glad they did, and also uh diversity too, really encouraging diversity, I thought that was great, so I was excited for that. Um, anyway, that's it, unless anybody has any other business, um we, I would just take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.